Good evening. Welcome to the special town meeting of the town of Sheffield. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name is Julie Hannum and I am your town moderator. If you are able, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll begin with introductions. At the head table, we have our select board chair, Lee Butala. We have Bob Kilmer and Patrick Silk. Our town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard. Our legal counsel, Mark Rich. Welcome. In the audience, we have some finance committee folks. I know we have Will Conklin, Nadine Haver, Ken Smith, Dave Macy. I'm not sure if Colin Smith made it, but he would be your chair.
He is.
He's here. Yay, thank you. We also have with us our garage project designer from EDM, Tim Widman, and we'll be hearing from him later, as well as our project managers from CMS, Scott Ludker and Neil Joyce. Thank you for being with us. Thank you to our town clerk, Felicity Joyce, and her assistant, Nicole Parker, and all of the check-in support staff encounters who help us make this meeting happen. So tonight, we have three warrant articles before us. Any amendments must be submitted in writing. And our town clerk says must be submitted in writing. So please keep that in mind if you have anything. Please stay seated when you're voting, especially if for any reason we do have to do a hand vote. Typically, for decorum, there's no clapping unless a vote is declared unanimous by the moderator. If you'd like to speak, there's a three-minute limit on that. If you're speaking for a second time, please share new information only. When you approach the microphone, we need to know your name, you need to know your street address, and please make sure your green card is visible. We don't have the little pouch where it used to be very easy for the moderator to see that, but make sure that's in your hand or in your pocket so I can see it, or I'll ask you for it. We're going to have a quick demo on our clicker system by Nicole. And I just want to assure everybody that even though your clickers are numbered, your votes are anonymous. So there was a question about that last time. And there's a 20-second timer, so you have 20 seconds to vote. And at this time, Nicole, you want to show us our demo.
All right, so I've got to open the vote. And so now it's counting down. You're going to hit yes or no. And you should see the totals climbing at the bottom.
Say yes. You're so happy to be here tonight.
You can also change your vote until it's closed.
And you're able to close your vote until it's closed, in case you couldn't hear Nicole.
All right, so it's passed.
Very good. And up across the top, you can see it was a majority vote. If it's a two-thirds, you'll see that as well. And then it's passed and the status is closed. So, thank you, Michelle. Uh, Nicole, sorry. All right. So, we will begin with Article 1. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, or any combination thereof, a sum of money for the design, engineering, site preparation, alteration, improvement, reconstruction, rehabilitation, demolition, and construction of town-owned buildings and any other improvements located at 48 Sheffield Business Park, and all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5,900,000 to pay the costs of design, engineering, site preparation, altercation, improvement, reconstruction, rehabilitation, demolition, and construction of town-owned buildings and all other improvements located at 48 Sheffield Business Park, and all costs incidental and related to thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow set amount under the pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of therefore, with all amounts appropriated by this vote, to be expended under the direction of the select board, and that the select board is authorized to enter into any and all agreements and execute -- yes, sorry about that. Any of the -- any and all documents, as may be necessary, on behalf of the town, including contracts in excess of three years to officiate the project as contained in Article 1 and printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to now introduce Lee Butala, who has some history and context.
We were going to give a -- for some of you, this might be a repeat, or for all of you, because the town garage as an issue has been going on since a temporary garage was built almost as long ago as I was born. We think it's somewhere in the mid-'60s. And we've also been going through this in a series of meetings around town. But I would like to give a little bit of a history. Again, the town garage that we're currently using was a temporary garage built more than 50 years ago. And its replacement has been on the list of needs for town since the last strategic plan. It was built as a temporary space. And in 2000, when there was a strategic plan, or 2001, there was an idea that the garage was already sort of beyond its prime and not meeting our needs. And that comes in a number of areas. There's storage capacity that's non-existent at the current site for both equipments and materials. A covered space that would add longevity for the equipment, much of which is very expensive, and has its life expanded, of course, by staying indoors and dry and clean when it's not in use. We're hoping to add a wash bay that will help prevent corrosion from rust and, again, keep that equipment moving forward. And tonight's probably the most appropriate night to be talking about our town crew and what they do for us, because we're all hoping that they'll be working tomorrow as the snow comes down. And this facility allows them to have a place to go to as they're doing these long runs in a snowstorm, both to refuel, to get more salt, to re-energize themselves, particularly for long storms like the one predicted for tomorrow. It also gives us a functioning workspace that we don't currently have for repairing things a little bit more easily and safely, taking on some of that work ourselves that we currently send out, because we don't have the space to necessarily do the repairs in our current facility. I don't know how many people are familiar with the current facility, but it literally involves vehicles being inside and the crew climbing out the windows, basically, to get out of the garage once they've brought things indoors. We don't really think that's how we want people to work that we hope to retain and keep, especially one day before a snowy storm. We're hoping that this safe work environment will encourage our staff to stay on and for us to retain them. There's a real shortage of highway workers in the region currently, and we have a strong team that we would really like to hold in place. As part of this process, you may remember from select boards before the three of us, although I think Bob has been involved in a good part of this process, there was a determination that we needed a new site, and a few locations were looked at. Berkshire School Road, there was a site there that was examined and really became so complicated to work on because of site restrictions and other holdbacks that really made us recognize early on that that couldn't work. And then, I believe, when Nadine, Renee, and Bob were on the select board, we identified a site on Hewin Street that was for sale, an empty site that would meet our needs, and we went to acquire that property. We all voted in a town meeting on that. We subsequently bought the property, only to discover in doing a design study that the costs for building that would have probably been about $16 to $20 million, a number a little bit higher than we would like to spend. Okay, a lot higher than we would like to spend. And then, I'm going to say that that board did a very brave thing, because the site across from that became available, and there was a building on it that allowed us to bring down our costs on this, because part of the cost of building things for us as a municipality is following state law for procurement and construction and prevailing wage. That makes new construction more expensive than potentially the adaptation of another space. So when this alternate spot was discovered, we realized we could save a lot of money, and the town had a meeting and people voted to purchase it last year. Subsequent to that, we've been working with EMS to come up with current designs, adding a storage building, a salt shed, a fueling station, and a wash bay, updating the building, current building as needed. And we have Tim Widman with us today, who's going to sort of walk us through that and answer some questions. As we're looking at these numbers, I just want to iterate that three groupings of select board have worked, I would say endlessly hard, along with Rhonda and our staff, to bring these costs down in every way that we could. We looked at components of this that we could move out of the public bidding process by procuring things through somebody called Sourcewell, where we can buy things directly, bringing down some of those costs. We tried to take care of whatever things that we could do before this to bring that down. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Tim Widman to walk us through the project a little bit. Thank you.
As mentioned, Tim Widman with EDM Studio, the project architect for the Highway Garage. What you see in front of you is the site plan, which I don't know why it's cycling. Site plan for the various facilities and improvements at Business Park Road with the existing structure, which we are fully renovating, a proposed -- I'm just going to do this. A proposed -- you've got to love technology. A proposed salt shed, as well as a wash bay and fleet storage building for the various pieces of equipment, as well as vehicles for the highway department, as well as a town fueling station. Just to give you an overview or a look at what that existing building is, as mentioned, it gives a great opportunity to use existing fabric from a cost perspective, as well as a sustainability perspective. Using an existing building is always a great idea to help to drive costs down, as well as to help with any of your sustainability goals in terms of not having to spend all of that money material, et cetera, to put in a new structure. As mentioned, it's often a lot more difficult, a lot more jurisdiction, a lot more regulations and costs that go into building new for municipalities here in Massachusetts. So this is a great way to take advantage of a building that isn't very old. It was built in 2009. Metal-framed, metal-sided building in very good shape and already contains many of the elements that are necessary for the Highway Garage. So this will end up being what you can see in the yellow, the primary office space, meeting room space, break room muster for the highway department, as well as their locker room, which we are taking one of the offices to turn into, as well as then adding a shower for staff to use within one of the bathrooms. The remainder of the building on the left-hand side of the plan is going to be the shop. So it will have a welding facility. It will also have lifts so that they can raise and lower their vehicles to be able to do routine maintenance, as well as those times when it's not so routine. As well as then fluid storage, tire storage, and compressor. So this will allow the highway department to be able to do a lot more maintenance and work on their vehicles, their tools, their equipment, as well as potentially be able to do more for the town. As part of this work, that existing building has overhead doors. We're going to be widening those so that it's more capable of accommodating the vehicles and that the town currently has, as well as offering another overhead door as well. So this will then become a space that will have that utility for all of the equipment that the town currently uses. In terms of new structures, as mentioned, there are two components to the new building that is going on the site. One is a wash bay, which will be utilized for essentially wash-down knockoff of existing vehicles when they come in off the road after a snowstorm. I'm sure you've all seen your own cars turn into essentially salt. And so being able to wash that, to knock that off of those vehicles, is going to lengthen their lifespan and reduce the amount of maintenance and damage from their use within the town. You can see in the plan here, that's the upper portion of the plan. Below that, then, is your fleet storage structure, which then would contain your vehicles that are not currently in use, as well as pieces of equipment like trailers, plows, et cetera, and give them a place where then they can be in, out of the elements, again, helping to improve the longevity of the equipment the town has. When we're going about this, in terms of the design for both the renovation and for the new structure, everything that we're looking at for you is based around longevity and durability, as well as looking for solutions that will reduce the maintenance that you have to put in at this new building. We want them maintaining your roads, not maintaining the building. So with that in mind, the current building is a metal-framed, metal-sided building. The new structure will also be an insulated metal panel building, steel-framed, which will have help with simplicity in terms of construction, as well as it will cut down on necessary maintenance that would be involved with different materials when it comes to painting or wear and tear from the elements. So what you see in front of you is essentially two views, one which is from the entry at Business Park Road, and then one within the vehicle court, essentially where you can see the existing building in the front on the top image with the fleet storage and wash bay beyond, and then the salt shed on the left-hand side. And then, within the court on the lower image, the existing building is on your left, the new structure is on your right, and then the salt shed beyond. That's it.
Are there questions? Discussion, please.
Peter Duma, 94, Pecker Road West. I'm in favor of this. And Lee, you forgot to mention that the current shed is on an Aquifer. So...
I didn't really want to remind anyone.
Yeah. Well, we need to be reminded. So I'm just wondering, if the S vote happens tonight, when's everything going to start? We've been after this for a long time. It needs to get started.
The minute that we have approval on this, drawings and plans will go out to bid in the new year. And our goal is to have this done as soon as possible, and we assume by 2027 it will be complete and possibly sooner. It's a little bit hard to tell how long the process will take, as we all know when we've worked on things in our house, but our goal is to get there as quickly as possible.
Other comments and discussion?
Pat Levine, 261 East Main Street. You talk about the cost savings of being able to do maintenance ourselves, which I think is admirable, but do we have that capacity? Do we have that skill? Do we have the equipment to do it? Or is that all yet something that will come down the road?
Pat, would you mind repeating that again? I think we were all having a little more difficulty.
Rhonda can recap.
Oh, Rhonda can recap. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if everyone heard, but Pat asked if we had the capacity to do some of the work on the trucks. I believe that we have the capacity to do more of the work. I'm not saying that we're going to take on huge, giant jobs, but what this will do will, for instance, if they're doing brakes now and they need a part and the part's back ordered, the whole garage is taken up with a truck that's taken apart. So these kind of things will be able to be done more efficiently, easier in this new garage. And yes, we do have the capacity to do some of the smaller stuff. And who knows what the future may be. In five years, the town will want a mechanic that can work on not only highway, but maybe police and senior center vehicles as well. So that's something for you to think about for the future.
And just a quick follow-up on that. Given that our temporary garage lasted about 60 years, we really do want to have this plan to project, to have some longevity and adaptability as we move forward. We imagine town will grow and so will our needs.
Other questions?
Sorry, I didn't mean to butt in there. Also, there is, what we're looking at with the maintenance part is not mainly, you know, tearing an engine down. These days, most of the time, you have to be computer literate with your laptop to diagnose it. What we're looking at is greasing equipment, doing brakes, simple things that, changing the oil, tires, your general maintenance that now, a lot of times, has to be sent out to be done. So there is a cost savings there. And it's not super-in-depth mechanical skills, or not breaking down rear ends or transmissions that, of course, will still have to go out to somebody that's highly skilled, especially these days.
Thank you, Bob. Yep, Bonnie?
Bonnie Silver, 15 Bauau Road. In the material we received at home, the prices for Article 1 are described, I'm really happy to see, described below. Is there any reason not to actually include it in the article so that we know what we're looking at and that we can't wind up with $12 or $13 million because it's not, the price is not included in the actual article? Thank you.
Thank you. Legal counsel, Mark Rich.
Yes, through you, Madam Moderator. I think it's important to know the difference between a warrant article and the motion. Warrant articles very often don't include things like specific dollar amounts, because that's being developed as the, including, if you see in the warrant article, talks about raise inappropriate, which is taxation, borrowing or transferring from available funds. So the warrant article gives a kind of a broad brush as to what can be done. And then the motion, and you heard, there was a very complex motion that was read, that tightens everything down. So in this case, it's specific to borrowing and has a specific total dollar amount. So that's where you see the actual action. So we talk about the article as being kind of the warning that something's going to happen, and then the article, and then the motion itself under the article, that's the action. So that's why you don't see necessarily a number in the warrant article.
Thank you. So we're covered in chapter 11, a $15 million dollar price.
Well, it's only as much as town meeting authorizes. You set the spending limit.
The motion that our selectman, Bob Kilmer, wrote, appropriate the sum of $5,900,000. So it was right there in the first sentence, and I'm sure we all got lost in everything else that followed, because it was complex. Neil, I believe you were next.
Neil Chamberlain, 115 Railroad Street, Ashley Falls. Ms. Moderator, I would like to congratulate whoever in this town figured out how to spend that money, millions of less dollars, than find this new site. Thank you, whoever was responsible for that. My question is this. In the current maintenance building, are there costs to rehabilitate that or clean that site up that are included in this? And if not, when do we look at that? Thank you.
So, no, those costs are not included in this amount of money. There hasn't been a lot of focus on what is exactly needed for the old shop at this point. There is a plan to use it for cold storage. So that evaluation will take place in the future, once we have the new facility constructed.
Thank you. Dennis, you have a question?
My name is Harold Dennis Sears, and I'm at 928 Boardman Street. And I was a longtime member of the school committee in town. And what happened was that my wife and I drove over to where this place will be developed. And I was absolutely struck with, that's a great location, you know? And I strongly support this.
Thank you.
And even after so many years of having been, you know, on the school committee and so forth, as well as being a member of the town. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Other questions? Jim?
Jim Larkin, 174 West Road. I agree with everybody. This is long overdue, and I think it's a great project. But I do have one issue. If the town owns that, the site is within that driveway circle, my contention is I wish you would have more acreage there. If you're looking down the road 100 years, which most likely you will if you went 50, 60 with the other one, they'll open the door for the future. Besides, this build-out, from what I can see, is going to pretty much occupy the whole space. So I seem like had an acreage number early on that was bandied about like four acres, but it's my contention, then if that's the case inside of that driveway circle, it sure is not four acres. So why don't maybe fill me in on that?
There's four acres at the site currently. Not all of the site is going to be used. As you see on the, I would say it's the east, northeast end, near the salt shed, there is a sizable piece that won't be used at this time. And by keeping the old Highway Garage as cold storage, we did not have to build additional. We already have it available. And also, that whole site is three acres, but it's only usable in about an acre and a half. But that's where we planned to use cold storage, like lawn mowers in the winter can sit in the old shop. We'll have area for aggregate around there, because there won't be equipment around the old shop. So basically, the old shop area will be for aggregates, brush, whatever we have to have that's a little more unsightly and unstable. And the shop is adequate. It's got a new roof on it. It's adequate for cold storage. It isn't adequate for much more than that at this point. But between that site and the current site, we should have more than ample space for any changes or modifications that may come down 20 years from now.
So you're satisfied with the space?
Correct.
Sorry?
Thank you. Sarri Hoy, 60 Main Street. I just wanted to clarify a couple of the numbers. The $5,900,000, does that include the money that we, or does that include the equipment and everything that we're paying for or purchasing ourselves? Or is this above and beyond that?
Yes, this has money in there for the air compressor and the lifts and that portion of the equipment that will be necessary for fitting the building now.
I meant the things that you're procuring for the town.
As well as the salt shed and the components that we're looking at doing ourselves. And then, in addition to that, of course, we've already acquired the land and the monies that we've already appropriated for this.
And that's what I was going to ask about the $9 million. Does that include all the money that was spent on the land and everything else? So the $5,000,000 is what we think is the final cost for the rest of the story?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Crystal Van Duzen, 94 Pike Road West. In the warrant, it mentions an increase of approximately $308 on the current tax rate. Is that per year or per quarter?
Per year. Okay.
Hi, Barry Kreisberg, 322 Bow Wow Road. I applaud all the work that was done in the development of, you know, what we've been seeing, and seems like a most reasonable solution to a decades-old problem. I do have one question. The Hewans Road or Hewan Street property, what will happen to that property? Could it be sold and therefore fund some of this, or is it the, what's the intention? To keep it for some reason? That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question. The Hewans piece of property, which we appropriated the funds for earlier, can be sold. It would have to be voted on by the town for that to move forward. There was a move at the last town meeting, or was it the previous, the last town meeting, to hold on to the land that was made from the public, and that was voted on. But it could certainly come up again.
Does somebody recall the cost or the price of that at the time it was purchased? Just ballpark.
$225?
Something like that. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much for that effort, and it sounds like a great plan.
Sir, before you leave the microphone, could you repeat your name? I didn't catch it.
Barry Kreisberg with a K, 322 Bow Wow Road.
Thank you. Very good, thank you. Any other comments, concerns? Well, then I think we are ready to prepare to vote. You are voting to approve the town to borrow $5.9 million. And indeed, it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. It says two-thirds right on my paper, I didn't say it. Thank you. All right, are we ready? We'll get the voting to open. The status is open. The motion has passed. 54 yes, 4 no, and indeed, it's not unanimous, but this has been a long time coming. Let us clap for this. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and your vote on that. On to Article 2. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $200,000 for replacement of the Limekiln Road Bridge, including engineering, design, and any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative
I move that the town vote to transfer from the stabilization fund $200,000 for the replacement of the Limekiln Road Bridge, including engineering, design, and any incidental and related costs and expenses.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there questions? Discussion?
There's a note on here giving people a little bit of the history of this, and if it's all right, I'd like to take a second to speak, because I think we're really excited at the prospect of having a second bridge repaired in town, when we know the towns around us have really been struggling. And DOT has offered to cover the majority of this cost and has asked us to put this amount forward. The total cost for repairing this bridge is $2,600,000, and that's just construction. And so, I think we're getting about the best offer on earth, but I'm looking forward to hearing what other people have to say. And I'd like to thank Rhonda, the Department of Transportation, and a number of people who really worked to make this happen.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, then I think we should prepare again to vote on Article 2. We'll watch the status when it is open. Please use your clickers. Thank you very much. 58 to 1. This article passes, not quite unanimously, but indeed, you know, I don't usually take time to comment on this, but I live near Brookside Bridge, so that's all I need to say. With what's going on, I'm so pleased that Sheffield is able to do such a good job with the bridges, the difficulties we have. On to Article 3. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $20,000 for legal expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $20,000 for legal expenses. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or clarification beyond what we have? Yes, sir?
Jim Larkin, again. This is just a technicality on my part. I could be wrong, but when you, your wording kind of bothers me a little. You say there has been some unanticipated legal funds. Costs or funds?
That's my error, I apologize for that.
Hey, gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha.
Yep, legal expenses. Any other clarifications or anything that, from the head table? Okay, hearing none, then we will prepare. This motion requires a simple majority. And when we are ready, okay, please execute your clickers. And the motion carries, 54 to 4. All right, well, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I was remiss, I meant to thank Chris Thompson for the technical support, for being here with us onstage before the meeting and running everything in the back. Thank you, Chris, for your time of being here this evening. Also, best wishes, happy holidays, see staff when you're turning in your clickers, and very excited for the holiday season, and wish you all the best. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting. And seconded. I declare the meeting dissolved. We're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.